All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome Midwest City Council meeting July twenty, what today? Twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. I want to welcome you here. We do have a very packed agenda this evening. I would ask that everyone in attendance maintain decorum and professionalism throughout. We do have a Boy Scout troop there with us tonight, and we need to set the example. They're getting their communications merit badge. So with that being said, I'm calling this meeting to order. I would like to ask Mr. Sullivan to come forward and offer the invocation. And Troop one forty-seven, can you come down front, please? And they will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance. Don't be shy.
Ask you to bow at me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty of this day. Father, we thank you for the council, and they're willing to serve in this community. And Father, they have difficult decisions ahead of them tonight. We ask that your discernment and your wisdom be upon them. Thank you so much for the freedom we enjoy to assemble like we're doing here tonight, and those who are willing to be all over the world guaranteeing our freedom in this great nation, this great state, and this great city. Thank you for your son, Jesus, and the freedom from sin through his sacrifice on the cross. We ask his favors in his holy name. Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's give him a hand. Good job. Well, we do have a proclamation to do, but the recipient of the proclamation isn't here yet, so we'll move into our community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon.
Thank you, Mayor. So starting our first announcement, I have to give credit to Ward One Councilperson Susan Eads, who's been pushing this idea for some time. So we are having Midwest City's first citywide garage sale on September twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four this year. The garage sale will be open for registrations in mid-August. More details will be posted to our website, social media accounts, and through our mail newsletters. At that time, the garage, the citywide garage sale will also be advertised in the Midwest City Beacon. Jeff can say thank you. Links to our social media accounts and our email newsletters can be found at MidwestCityOK.org. And as we get all the registrations, they'll be put on a map, and you can map them out, print it off, for going throughout the city.
If I could interrupt you briefly, Mr. Lyon. I just want to give recognition to Ms. Rilla Johnson, who's in the audience with us tonight, who is the constituent of mine who repeatedly asked for this wave, Rilla. And so she's the one who has pressed for this for all the time I've been asking for it. She's the spearhead behind that. And again, this is a prime example of when you as citizens ask, we listen to you. Ms. Rilla, don't wink. We listen, and we try to do what we can to help you with what you're asking for. So.
Yeah, no fee.
And there's no fee, as you were noting, associated with this event. So we're going to try this out, and hopefully more citizens will be inclined to want to participate, and we'll have a successful event, and we can do this on an annual basis.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you so much, and thanks to you and the staff for spearheading this. We appreciate it.
Next, the Mommy and Son Splashapalooza, August second at Regional Park. Go to our website and for information and link for tickets. And then finally, the Midwest City sales tax for the month of July, which is the first month of our fiscal year. Our sales tax was down about seventy-six thousand. Our use tax was down about eleven, which is eighty-seven thousand overall, which is about 1.9%. But compared to our projection, which is what our budget is based on for revenue, we were pretty much flat at zero point nine. So anyway, that is in the last few months, we've seen very flat sales tax here. So please shop Midwest City. See that go up a little bit next month.
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward with our business agenda, I'd like to ask your indulgence and make a motion to hear item F-two. It's further information number two, and have Mr. Bundy come forward on that as it pertains to discussion item five.
So the further information number two?
Yes, sir.
Monthly residential commercial building report for June twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bundy.
If we could at least do it before we do number five, is my ask.
Okay, we can facilitate that.
There's an interrelationship there, so I just wanted to put that out there on record and make my motion if someone is inclined to.
We can facilitate that. Mr. Bundy, you got it?
Thank you.
Well, our proclamation recipient isn't here yet. And Mr. Streets, you can dock his pay for it. We're going to go ahead and move on with our agenda. Like I said, we do have a lengthy agenda tonight. We move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so council members by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item, or if there's not unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. I would ask a motion be made to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number twelve. It needs to be pulled.
I'd like to have three and eleven pulled also, please.
Will you make a motion to signify that?
To approve consent agenda absent items three, eleven, and twelve, please.
Second. A properly formed motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention motion carries. Item number three.
Yeah, I can see item three.
Yeah, item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of possible action approving the school resource officer mutual cooperation agreement with the Mid-Dell School System for the time period of July one, two thousand twenty-four through June thirty, two thousand twenty-five. Mid-Dell School System will pay the city an amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine sixty-five for the term of the contract.
So the reason that I asked to have this agenda item pulled for discussion was just the fact to highlight that, again, this is an agreement between the city and the school district to provide two school resource officers to both of the high schools, Mid-Dell, excuse me, Midwest City, as well as Carl Albert. And they are paying for basically ten months of service by those officers, and the city picks up the remainder of the cost, as is stated in the agenda. But I wanted to highlight it for the sake of the public to show that it is something that the city is doing to provide support in our two high schools. I also wanted to ask if there had been any discussion, because I know there were at least a couple of events that were of real concern that occurred at the middle school, particularly Monrooney last year, if there had been any discussion or request to further extend school resource officers to the middle school or school.
Yeah, so let me, so first of all, we're adding a school resource officer, Carl Albert, and they'll be, that'll be the second one there, and that, one of those will float back and forth between the high school and the junior high. For the Midwest City Junior High, there'll be, there is one there. There, he's a retired police officer, and they pay him separately.
Okay.
Which is Don L. Smith.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, because I know there'd been some events happen there, so. And with that, I would move to approve the item.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention motion carries. Item number eleven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of possible action regarding approving an MOU extending the collective bargaining agreement between the city and Midwest City and the FOP Lodge one twenty-seven while negotiations are ongoing.
So I just wanted to ask for clarification on this. So it's my understanding, based upon the MOU, that this will extend the agreement that has been in place with the PD through June of two thousand twenty-five? That sounds kind of odd to say out loud, unless there is an intervening agreement that is reached. But otherwise, the terms will continue, as previously stated, with slight revision based upon what was reflected in our agenda packet. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, Troy's here, but in the past, there used to be something called the Evergreen Clause, and the Evergreen Clause allowed the contracts to automatically roll, and that was struck down. And so the contract only rolls by mutual agreement. And the only difference between this contract and the last contract from last year, the rolling contract, is the health benefits amount, which changed. I don't think there was anything else, was there, Troy?
No, this was just to administratively make sure that everything runs, that the police department runs as it, as it should, that all the ranks and the discipline and the pay is able to go through, and then updated for the health benefits plan for this year.
Okay.
While we continue to negotiate for the, this fiscal year's collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. So, and this is acceptable to both sides? I saw it was signed by the FOP president.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so with that, I move to approve item number eleven.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, motion carries. Item number twelve, Mr. Lyon.
Really quickly, point of order, Mr. Mayor. We have a pretty full house, but there are seats available down here. If you all want to just make your way down here, and everybody will make room so you don't have to stand through this meeting. So feel free, don't, don't let us talking stop you from trying to take a seat and get comfortable, so.
On this particular item, I'm going to have to pass the gavel to the vice mayor and reclusive myself from voting.
Okay, discussion item number twelve is discussion consideration possible action approving a resolution nominating Matthew D. Dukes the second, Mayor of City of Midwest City, to the Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors.
This is something that takes a resolution, and it make, we have to submit a resolution to OML for Mayor Dukes to sit on their board. I know for a fact, for the eight years that I've been on here, Mayor Dukes has been extremely involved in OML and ACOG. But this is a, this is an elected deal that, it's just not Midwest City. It's basically all of central Oklahoma. And each city has a representative that's allowed to vote, so this doesn't automatically mean that Matt's going to get on it. He's going to have to, he's going to have to run against whoever else unless somebody else doesn't submit their name. But this is a, this is an unpaid deal. It's outside of what he is expected to do in Midwest City. So he's doing this on his own, at his own time, for the benefit of our city. And the reason he's not talking on it is he can't talk to his own vote. So it's going to take two other people other than myself to make the motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a properly formed motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate it. We now move into the discussion items of our agenda. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one eighty, public hearing discussion consideration of possible action to approve a special use permit to allow moderate impact institutional permitted in the R six, single-family detached residential district for the property described as a part of the southwest quarter, section one, township eleven, north range, two west of the Indian Meridian, located at ninety-one thirteen, ninety-one twenty-five, and ninety-two oh one, southeast fifteenth. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a special use permit. The site in question is the site that was previously occupied by the Harvest Life International Church. And, and what they're looking to do is, is to operate a, a school at that site. It's a preparatory school for aspiring athletes. They, they're looking to cater to junior and high school age students. And at this time, their enrollment is about thirty-five students, and they envision that they might eventually have an enrollment of about fifty. As far as the, sort of the zoning requirements and the impacts that, you know, we would typically look at in making recommendations about whether or not it's an appropriate use in that area, we find that, you know, it's located along an arterial road. There's not really that much additional traffic that we would anticipate there being any, any issues with the surrounding neighborhoods or the school, Soldier Creek Elementary School that's nearby. And we do recommend approval of this item with the four conditions that are listed in the staff report. We want to make sure that there's adequate parking on, paved parking on the site, that the dumpster and dumpster enclosure are done within the, the standards in our regulations, that they, landscaping in accordance with our regulations, and then our condition that we apply to all these special use permits that sort of lets it expire if there's ever a change in ownership or tenancy of the building. That way, if somebody else wanted the use, a similar use, they would come before council for their own permit. We followed all state and local notification requirements. We did have some calls on this one, but it was mostly just people inquiring about what the application was. Nobody voiced any opposition on those calls. The applicant was present at the planning commission. There were a couple of folks that asked questions at that time as well, but no opposition. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Action is at the discretion of council.
Is the applicant here?
I believe so.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience have anything either for or against this particular item?
I have a question of the applicant.
Is?
He's up in the back.
Would the applicant come forward, please? Hey, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carlos Adamson, seven, fifteen oh one, Southwest, one hundred and thirteenth place, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Okay, and it's my understanding these, these young men and women are not going to be housed at that location, correct?
No, sir.
And they'll be going to school basically there every day?
Yes, sir.
With the emphasis on their athleticism?
Yes, sir.
And people pay extra to come to this school?
Yes, it's tuition-based.
Okay.
Wasn't any opposition. I've, it's my ward, so I've had a few people call me. And one of them, I think, and I just want to make sure we get this on the record, that there's no outside activity. You're not going to put a basketball court in outside, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, that was the only concern of any of the neighbors, is if you put in the court, and you put in lights, it backs up to a neighborhood. But that's the only concern that, that anybody raised to me.
Got you. No, sir.
And you'll keep the kids from Midwest City leaving and not going to Arizona, right? Like the one that did last week?
That's definitely the plan.
Okay. Because one of our stud basketball players went to Arizona to do this exact same thing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I do have one question, so I understand that there is cost associated with attending the school. Is there scholarships or discounts available for any of the kids who are residents of Midwest City?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move any further, Ryan, I'm getting some indication that the volume isn't sufficient for the audience. Can, can we raise a little bit? Okay. If there's no other questions of the applicant, no other questions, Mr. Summers, chair to entertain a motion. Oh, whoa, I'm sorry.
Middle school, middle school through high school, sixth grade through twelve.
You have some cowboys in there, right?
Yes.
Sir, I, I will advise you, you don't have to answer that question at all.
I knew the answer to the question. I wouldn't have asked it.
There's a house divided up here.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention motion carries.
Good luck.
Okay, Mr. Lyon, we'll move to item number two.
It's American. Item number two, PC twenty-one sixty-eight, public hearing discussion consideration of possible action approving a resolution amending the comprehensive plan from office retail to office retail in high-density residential, and in ordinance to redistrict the community commercial district C-three to the planned unit development with a C-three, with C-three as a base zoning district for the property described as lot three, blocks five, six, seven, and eight in Heritage Park Mall. Resubdivision blocks three, four, and five, a Miracle Mile addition, and in addition to Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, as shown by the recorded plat thereof. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. And I guess, did you want?
Sure, I believe each one of you has received a letter from the applicant asking that this item be either tabled or no action taken. John, I, I believe it is our opinion that they probably need to discuss and make a decision on that item first before moving on any, towards anything else.
Correct.
So if you guys will discuss that initially and decide whether you are going to undertake tabling or not taking any action on this.
Is there any desire of the council to table or take no action on this particular item this evening? The chair to entertain a motion indicating so.
I would state that it appears to me from the packet that we were provided on this item that the applicant has had a number of extensions in going forward before the planning commission, and sought an extension even a third time before the planning commission. So I, again, would defer to the city attorney, but it's my understanding, and what we have historically done in the past, is state that either you can go forward with your application or you can withdraw your application and start all over with the process again. So if the applicant wants to withdraw their application and start over, then that's one thing. But I'm inclined to deny their request for continuance of the application as proposed to this council, noting that they've had plenty of extensions already. So that's my position, and I move accordingly to deny their request to postpone.
Properly formed motion. Do I have a second? Second. Okay, the motion is to deny the request for a continuance on this particular item. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, the request is denied. Continue, Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is a rezoning application. They are requesting to rezone the, the property to a PUD with an underlying C-three zoning. As many of you are aware, the property was developed as a mall in the nineteen seventies. It has not been used as a mall in several years. And in two thousand twenty-two, the city declared the area, including the, the subject of this application, to be blighted, consistent with Oklahoma law. And then in two thousand twenty-three, the city adopted the Heritage Park Mall Urban Renewal Plan, which included the subject property, and amended the comprehensive plan to include the urban renewal plan. The application before you today, the applicant's looking to, I guess, introduce some new uses to the site through, through the PUD. There are some areas identified in their plan that they would like to use for high-density residential. Their plan also identifies some agricultural and industrial uses that would also be potentially allowed on-site if the rezoning was to be approved. The master development plan map shows that the site would largely remain the same, from the same point of the parking areas that exist today would remain parking areas. The buildings that are there today would largely remain in the same place and the same size. The application does propose some amenities, but it doesn't really indicate where on the site those amenities are, are going to be. It's my finding that the approval of the rezoning would not be consistent with the urban renewal plan or the comprehensive plan. There are, there's not really any discussion in it. If the application was to be approved, what impact that might have on the urban renewal plan for that area. In addition to that, as I discuss in the, the findings in my staff report on page sixteen, I find that, you know, there are a number of sort of regulatory requirements that we have for planned unit development applications that this application does not satisfy. It's not supported by many of our long-range plans. And, and I do have some concerns about, you know, in particular, some of the agricultural and industrial uses and their proximity to residential uses in some of the surrounding area. With that said, we followed all state-local notification requirements. We had a couple of phone calls with folks who are interested in, you know, things like the date and the time of the hearing, but no oppositions expressed over the phone. At the public hearing before the planning commission, the applicant did have, was present and addressed the commission. And we had several neighborhood or community members show up and express their concerns about the application and how it would fit in with their, you know, residential properties that are nearby. The planning commission did recommend denial of this item with a five to two vote.
If I could interject a question just really quickly. Mr. City Attorney, you have heard what Mr. Summers has just outlined as his opinion as far as an analysis of criticisms of the proposed PUD plan. Could you please enlighten us as to whether you share those same concerns or if you have a contrary opinion as our legal counsel?
have a contrary opinion as our legal counsel?
I share many of the concerns that are stated in the, in the staff report. The staff report went through and did a very thorough job in looking at the application, highlighting its strengths, noting its deficiencies, and also addressed issues with the comprehensive plan and the urban renewal plan that I do concur with in the, in that summary and that analysis.
So do you believe, Mr. City Attorney, or do you recommend that this council... ...or see critically with regard to this proposed PUD, based on those deficiencies?
While there are deficiencies, I believe the city, the city council needs to listen to the presentation by the applicant, ask those questions that are necessary to, for this city council to be able to make a determination.
It's my understanding the applicant is present and has the presentation. Could you put forward, state your name and address?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Kelly Work, and I'm here representing the applicants in connection with this proposed PUD. My office address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City, and we are requesting approval by the council of this proposed planned unit development. The rezoning application includes the approximately 27.35 acres, and that encompasses, as has already been mentioned, most of the Heritage Park Mall property. As you all are aware, it does not include, of course, the Life Church property on the West End, and it also does not include the former Sears building on the East End, but the bulk of the remaining Heritage Park Mall property is included within this proposed PUD.
Sir, if I could inquire really briefly, when were you retained by the applicant in order to...
I was, I was retained after the application was filed and prior to the, I don't remember the exact date, that, I know the planning commission matter was heard, the case was heard, and a recommendation was made on July the 2nd. I was in attendance and representing the applicant at that time. I was retained before the prior setting for the planning commission. I'm sorry, I don't recall that specific date, but it was a month or so earlier.
One of the continuances before the planning commission, basically?
Yes, and of course, the objective of the continuance from the earlier planning commission meeting to the July 2nd planning commission meeting was for the purpose of trying to work with the staff to address many of the concerns that had been raised in the earlier staff report. And so we endeavored, we met with Mr. Summers and Mr. Marsh and with your economic development director, and, and we have been working in an effort to try to address the concerns that they raised. And at, when we got to the planning commission meeting on the July the 2nd, we had the benefit of Mr. Summers revised report, and that did reflect many of the changes that we had made, and as Mr. Summers identified, they did feel that there were some additional areas that needed further definition. And of course, we are wanting to and open to try to address those issues. Specifically, there were some concerns about the definition of the location on the proposed aquaponics agricultural use and the residential uses that are being proposed. And we understand this is, I mean, it's a very unusual proposed mix of uses, but, but we think that that is going to be what is going to be required in order to revitalize this existing former shopping mall. But I hope that, that is helpful to answer your question, but our, when I became involved and I saw that the staff report had so many issues that had been raised with respect to the proposed PUD, it just seemed that it was necessary for us to take some additional time to see if we could work with the staff, and we're certainly wanting to work with the staff and with the city, to convince the city that this is, you know, both appropriate and feasible and realistic and possible to be accomplished, because we, we have the same objective, we believe, that the city has, and that is to revitalize Heritage Park Mall and have it be a contributing asset to the city, and that's, that's been our objective and remains our objective today. Yes, sir.
Are you conversant with the aquaponics plan?
I'm conversant with respect to the plan as it is described in the materials that are submitted with the application, and we do have, which I, with the mayor and council's permission, we have just a short 60-second video that is a report, and has, includes some video of an aquaponics facility that exists in Tulsa that...
Are you aware, then, I guess you would be, of the byproducts of a biomass degenerator?
Well, I'm certainly not a scientist. I understand that there is definitely a biomass component that will be produced in conjunction with the aquaponics.
It's sulfur gas and methane.
And, and of course, it would have to be appropriately dealt with and, and addressed as part of any facility. And I understand, I know you're, you were expressing a concern about the, how the residential use in parts of the mall could be compatible, being located with the proposed aquaponics facility, and Ms. Alexandria Muel is present and hopefully can address some of that.
I'm, I'm eager to hear that, but I'm also interested in the well-being of the neighbors. We've got a restaurant in very close proximity, a very well-known restaurant, and I believe you're proposing discharging ammonia, sulfur gas, and possibly methane gas into the atmosphere after the biomass production as a result of the fish tank. And I, I haven't seen any mention anywhere in any of this material about how you plan to deal with the noxious odor.
Well, that is certainly a valid concern, and, and we would agree, and would need to be appropriately addressed as part of this facility. It is, of course, all that is, it is all of the aquaponics facility would be conducted indoors, as you're aware, and so we would certainly want that to be done in a way that's not going to adversely impact the neighborhood, the residents, or the adjoining commercial businesses. And so whatever those requirements are, we would want to be subject to them and make sure that we're not creating a problem for any one.
Well, I guess my concern, if I could just jump in here to follow up on what Mr. Thompson is asking, is we're kind of, I believe, as a city, at a point where we no longer are at a, we would want to, or gosh, we're gonna, but we want to see a concrete plan that is appropriately thought out, that to, for all intents and purposes, will be successful and is financed, because we've been sitting with this property for years in a deteriorated state, in a state that, based on the information that has been brought forward to us from our inspectors with the city, from the fire marshal, et cetera, contains chemicals that are of a danger to the surrounding residents, many of whom are here this evening, that are a danger to our first responders should fire break out in that building. There has been a long history of communication and evaluation, and even the city has put forward, and someone will have to correct me on the exact number, but a over $50,000 plan of proposal for development that came forward years ago and was provided to the applicant as a means to take off. And now here we sit, July 23rd of 2024, and you're coming before us respectfully, counselor, but you're coming before us with a, well, we've got a plan, sort of. We've got a sort of plan that's got problems, and we know it's got problems, but we'll get to it eventually. And I'm going to just speak from my own perspective, okay? Having sat on this council, and there are members on this horseshoe who have been on this council longer than I, and have heard the frustration of our constituents and our citizenry about Heritage Park Mall, and why can't we do something with it? Why can't we do something about it? So, you know, while I appreciate hearing a proposal, I'd like to hear a proposal that is concrete, that doesn't have holes in it like Swiss cheese of things we need to fix that we haven't got to, and that tells me it's adequately financed. I don't see any letters of intent. I don't see any letters of commitment from entities to back up these proposed plans in this packet. I don't see anything with regard to those individuals have actually done a site inspection and seen what the true condition of that property is, not just what they're being told, but have actually walked the property, looked at the property, looked at the roof, all of the things, and said, yep, we're ready to move in. Let's start. Am I missing something in the proposal?
I think your concerns are certainly valid, and I cer, we certainly understand the frustration that, that you all as members of the council and that the city of Midwest City feels with regard to the, the, the condition of Heritage Park Mall and the fact that it has sat empty. There are a lot of factors, as I'm sure you're aware, that go into why the mall is not successful. Part of that relates, and this, there was this discussion at the planning commission, relates to just a general over-retail environment. We have an oversaturation of retail, and there simply is not the demand for additional retail space to go into this 1970s vintage shopping mall, and if you all...
And I appreciate, counselor, I'm sorry, but I appreciate what you're saying about that, but let's take retail off the table, okay? Because I don't think anybody, I don't think the plan that this city delivered to the applicant years ago involved, let's turn it back into a mall. I mean, everything that we've seen be brought forward has involved other uses, and your current proposal doesn't involve retail space use, essentially, correct?
It includes, it includes a retail component, certainly, that, that is...
It's not the largest component, though. I mean, we've got senior housing proposed, we've got an aquaponics facility proposed. Like, it's not about turning this thing back into a mall or a strip mall or anything akin to that the lady next to you keeps shaking her head in agreement with.
Well, you know, as you all are, have experienced, the city that is itself, as the, as I understand, the owners of the former Sears property for approximately the last several years, I mean, the difficulty in finding a, an adaptive reuse of these kinds of buildings is, it's, it's a difficult proposition. And, and again, what we're requesting before you all today is a request for rezoning of the property. The property is currently zoned C3 commercial, and we're asking for rezoning that would, that would accommodate these additional proposed uses.
And the central component, I believe, Mr. Works, of that rezoning is a three-story apartment complex, correct? That is really what we're talking about. The aquaponics aside, that's sort of a sideshow. We're talking about initially a three-story apartment complex with roughly 150 units, expected rents of $1,400 a month, I think, is what the proposal said, and two more units after that, a Plan A and a Plan B, both including additional apartments. So looking at the Midwest City economic picture overall, are you going to try and tell me that Midwest City has a shortage of apartments at this point, and that we're in dire need of another three-story apartment building on that location?
I'm not trying to tell you that, no, sir. And I think the, and maybe Ms. Muel can give you some more specifics about that, but what is contemplated, as I understand it, and it, and we, that question was raised at the planning commission by the staff, I guess, before the planning commission meeting, and we proposed to limit the number of residential units to 300.
The planning commission decides what can be done, we decide what should be done.
I understand.
So that's the question. Does anybody actually believe that we should build another three-story apartment complex on that location? And if so, why?
The, the proposal was to provide for senior housing, including for disabled seniors.
At 1,400 bucks a month?
That is what is contemplated to be done.
And your proposal said these are very poor individuals with handicaps, disabilities of sorts, and you're going to, and the drawing I looked at was not handicap accessible, it was just standard apartment complex. There were no extra wide hallways, no extra wide doorways, no special bathroom facilities. They were just standard apartments at $1,400 a month. That is not the kind of apartment that's going to appeal to a very low-income individual on a fixed income.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor? And I've got five pages of notes that, from reading Mr. Summers and your report, but to tag onto what Mark is saying, in, in the staff report, it talks about the mixed industrial uses with residual uses, or residential uses, particularly with some of the identified occupants as being disabled seniors and veterans. It's not the best practice and seems likely to invite health-related issues for the vulnerable population, and that's in the staff report. And if I read your proposal, what you're wanting to do is give these disabled seniors and veterans the opportunity to go down there and work amongst this fish, whatever you want to call it, that's putting off all this chemical stuff, and then it's not even, if it's not leaving the building, you're going to ventilate it or whatever, but they're going to be exposed to that. So we're going to put people that are already vulnerable in that position? I'm not so sure that's, that would be something that I would want anybody that I knew to do that. And then on another note, on the apartments, since we're just talking about that, it's, and this is y'all's work, not ours, it says a professional assessment of approximately $12 million will be needed to retrofit Phase 1 only, in which a host of banks, funds, and other financial institutes are interested. And to tag onto what she said and what Mark said, there is no mention of a bank, of an institute that's going to loan you money, or anything along those lines, and that's just for Phase 1, the apartments. So, you know, that's...
And, sir, let me interject a couple of things. First off, you have no idea, no idea at all, the issue before you. I'm sorry that you've gotten pulled into this at the last minute. This has been a contentious issue for nine years, nine years. We handled, we handed your client a $58,000 study on how to redevelop the mall, none of which of those three plans included in that study included the mall standing. I hope I get that across to you. None of that included that. It included some residential, some light retail, the possibility of a senior center or something like that, but none of it included that mall standing as is, with the exception of Life Church, which owns their building outright, and it would have to be engineered to facilitate the east side facade for that building. So, no, you cannot appreciate the frustration that's felt, especially for myself and Mr. Burns, who's been on the council throughout the fruition of this discussion, and how many times we've been told that, we're going to take care of it, we're going to take care of it, we're going to take care of it, none of which has occurred. So there's no way... So there's no way that you can stand, coming in as Johnny Come Lately, and understand our frustration with this whole proposal. And I hope you, I hope you get that, because it is a frustrating issue, and there's a lot of people, I've known for a lot of years, sitting behind you that shares our frustration and live by the mall and have to drive past it every day and look at the condition it is in, knowing what was there when it was built in the 1970s. And it was a valid, very fresh, and a great place of retail development for the east side of Oklahoma County for a number of years. So you cannot appreciate the frustration we're say, we're feeling on this. So, yes, ma'am?
I just wanna state, you come to us with an incomplete plan. I have not been on the council very long, but I've been long enough to know that this is, as previously stated, very frustrating. To bring us a plan that doesn't tell us the footage, or what, the footage of the buildings. A building cannot be built with the codes that we have to live under today without certain issues. And we have people in this room who are expert at that. I know a little bit about it, but I don't know a lot. What I, when I read the plan, it's just incomplete. It's incomplete. And I don't know where we go from here. Do we send them back and we start over? I don't know, but we have an incomplete plan. We have a dream. We have a, I wish I could've, should've, maybe in the future, have this done. We need a complete plan so that we can move forward.
Right, and to follow up on what Councilwoman Maxwell just said, that's what I was alluding to earlier, as well as, it's an untenable plan. There's, it is a dream, so to speak. There is no financing indicated behind it. There is no commitment indicated behind it. In order to implement this, I mean, it's just barrier after barrier is what I view with regard to this proposal that you have put before us. And so, you know, personally, I think that we oughta open the public hearing and let some of the constituents come forward and address what they have come here to say.
Councilwoman Eads, there is one clarification. They do have a financial plan, and it involves Bitcoin. And you have a Bitcoin offering, I think you call it an original coin offering, an OCI that you're talking about?
May I ask, may I ask?
Go ahead. Go ahead and take over the podium.
Ms. Muel has been very patiently waiting here to address you all. And Alexandria Muel, she is working with the owners in connection with this proposed development plan. So let me allow her an...
Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Alexandria Muel, the 1606 Northwest 33rd, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I do understand you guys' frustration. I am a separate, I have a separate company aside from Mr. Berini, in which we are, you know, allies on redeveloping his property for the public good. So, there is, I wanna start with Ms. Eads. There is financial agreements in place with an international finance company by the name of Ambisafe. They actually helped SpaceX raise their money for their, are you familiar with SpaceX and Elon Musk? It's the same company that assisted them on raising their money, due to the scientists that we have onboard and their prominence and things of that nature. And then we also have letters of interest from Prosperity Bank, Metafund, and REI Oklahoma.
What's their total commitment?
They don't have a total commitment. We do need to work with the city more. We did separate the first phase of the property, and we do need to work with the city more as far as the needs of the public. When we did our initial plan, the $1,400 was set for the basic average around for high amenity properties and things of that nature. But based off of the needs of the city, it's more efficient to do elderly housing for the low income because there is the aquaponics agrotherapy component of it. And so we wanted to, you know, basically have a collaboration with the veterans as well because that is a state agency initiative as well. So that's, you know, that's, sorry. I'm a nerd.
You're good. You're good. But, but let me, let me try to get us on the same page together, 'cause I feel like we're not communicating.
Yes.
So what you're talking to me about with regard to this proposed financing process is a process. It's not a committed, "You got $12 million. Go," correct? No bank, no financial institution, no credit union, no, any financial entity has committed funds for you to use, to have at the ready, to... I wish Sean Reed was here right now, because again, he's better with the finance terms. But you don't have a, like, if I, if I wanna go buy a house, I'm gonna go get approved for a mortgage, okay? And so they're gonna give me a, a letter of credit, basically, that says, "Okay," and I may be using the wrong terms, Rick, maybe you can help me out on this, but they're gonna give me a letter, and they're gonna say, "Okay, Ms. Eads, you've been approved to spend, let's say, $400,000," I wish, by the way, "but here's what you got, okay? We, we know what you're doing. We believe in what you wanna do. You're good to go for it. Go. Tell me who you've got for this planned proposal right now and how much they're committed for." Not that they're gonna help you raise the money somehow, that we're gonna, we're gonna create a GoFundMe and try to build it up. No, no, no. I mean, I mean an actual letter from a bank, from a financial institution, from credit union, from anybody. How much for?
Okay, the issue was, they wanted us to separate that first apartment complex in order to use it for collateral. So that is what we're doing, that's what we've already done, is separated the first phase of it so that we can use that apartment complex building for collateral for the banks.
Okay, so how much do you have to build the first apartment complex, the first phase? How much of a commitment from a financial institution do you have to build the first phase?
We have the Vice President of Prosperity Bank onboard. Yes, ma'am.
I don't care. Tell me respectfully, ma'am, I'm an attorney, okay? I'm gonna call that non-responsive, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm gonna say to you, that's not responsive to my question. I, I want to know a number. Do you have a letter from a financial institution? Do you have a number of commitment? You can have $12 million to build this apartment complex.
The apartment complex drawing analysis, and again, the city, we still do not have a concrete on everything that has to be put inside of the building. So we don't, we have an approximate on how much it's going to cost, but as far as being able to do a performal with the banks, we have not been able to do that because we still have to figure out what all has to go inside of there for the seniors.
Boom, respectfully, ma'am. That's my point. You've got a plan that's like Swiss cheese. It's got holes all over it, okay? You can't tell me you've got an investment to build that apartment complex, which is your first phase, as you're describing it, because you don't even have the approval laid out to be able to go forward with the apartment complex. You don't have everything in place. You're talking about a, an apartment complex for seniors, for disabled individuals, for veterans. And as Councilman Thompson was pointing out, you're talking about a proposal to put these units out at $1,400 a month. I, I work with a lot of folks who are on Medicaid, Medicare, Veterans Benefits. They don't make $1,400 a month.
Yes, ma'am. The initial plan was just regular housing at $1,400 a month. And so I guess they have mixed the first proposals and the new proposal of, of what's going on because our initial draft with them was for just regular housing at $1,400 a month. Since then, it has been adopted to fit more gear towards the seniors and the seniors in the community.
Okay, and did I miss that?
I don't mean to interrupt either one of you.
No, you didn't miss it. It's not in the proposal.
We do need to get on with the public hearing on this particular issue. This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen.
I'd ask one more question. You said you were different, you have a different company than Mr. Berini.
Yes.
And you're, but your address, the address of Digital Dynasty Institute NGO is, what, 7008 Northwest 16th Street, I believe, correct? That's what you have on your paperwork. That's your address.
On what paperwork do I have that on?
Well, on all the paperwork that you submitted here.
Yeah, I get it.
It's the, it's your cover sheet, your signature on there. That also is the address, by the way, for the ABAB Incorporated, which is Mr. Berini's...
Yes, ABAB, AB, yes, sir. ABAB Inc. is the one that's here doing the development for a tenant, which is us.
So that is, but that's your, that's the address that you submitted?
They submitted the, this is not our lawyer. This is, this is not...
I'm not, I'm talking about your document. It's your document. It's, it's on your website, which you sent to me, you know, so...
Oh, sorry.
That is also, but that turns out to be Falls Creek Apartments. That is the office, leasing office of Falls Creek Apartments, which is owned by the Fall Creek LLC, which is administered by Mr. Berini. So your address, ABAB's address, and Mr. Berini's is all the same building. So it's not exactly a different company, is it?
Yes, it is. Yes, sir, it is. That's a clerical, yes, sir. That's a clerical error. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's a clerical error. We are separate from Mr. Berini. We do understand...
So it's a clerical error of your own address in your, on your website? That's not very professional. I'm sorry.
All right. We do need to get on, we do need to get on with the public hearing of this particular issue. Ms. Carroll, you signed up to talk about this issue. Are you still here? And once again, could you state your name and address for us, please?
Yes, thank you. Can you, can everyone hear me all right? All right, thank you. My name is Kay Carroll. I live at 108 South Bell Drive, Midwest City, directly on the south side, just right across from the mall on the south side, right at the light. And I'm three houses south of Reno. I am very concerned about the negative impact on our quality of life all around the mall. My side, my daughter and granddaughter live just on the north side, very, very close to the mall. And I'm very familiar with the byproducts of the proposed items, the compost, the hydroponics. The smell would be horrendous. And I do not want my daughter and granddaughter to be breathing that. I do not want anyone to be breathing that. And I just think it is a disaster waiting to happen. And also, in addition to that, the burden on the electrical grid, the city stormwater system, the sewer system, but the traffic, the noise, the trash trucks going in and out, the delivery trucks going in and out. But I'm very concerned about the noxious fumes that would be emitted. So I am very, very opposed to this, and...
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that the applicant does have a video to show the council. I would suggest that we go ahead and view this video, please. Is that it?
We just wanted to offer that as an illustration of an existing facility in Oklahoma, just in case people were not familiar with the hydroponics type of indoor growing. So we understand your point, the point that you're making. This would, this would be an aquaponics facility that is being proposed, correct?
So have you consulted with the owner of this hydroponics farm that was just featured in this short video clip about putting in an aquaponics farm at Heritage Park Mall?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, so, well, we'll just, we'll just let that be what it is.
You aware that less than 30% of all the aquaponic farms currently existing in the United States are profitable? It's basically a hobby.
OSU Oklahoma has a specialty branch where they assist commercial aquaponics producers here in Oklahoma. Growth Span is a major company that I'm working with on some other things, and they were the ones who introduced me to them. So it is a very big thing in Oklahoma, that OSU themselves has a special branch, and they're helping people do it.
Does anybody on the council have any further questions?
Are there any, are there any other members?
You know, Matt Summers and our planning people did probably do one of the best, most thorough reports that I've seen in the eight years I've been on, or nine years I've been on the council. And they identified multiple things with the application that should cause us, cause every citizen in Midwest City to be concerned about. You know, the, the fact that they're gonna put some things in there that are gonna be adverse to some of the people that they wanna live there. There's another one in there, and these are, these are just the main ones. Some of the amenities described, this is what Mr. Summers said, "The design statements such as gardening exercise facilities, access to retail, are very dependent upon future operations and ownership of the facility. If the ownership of the facility were to change after development, there's no guarantee these programs will be continued as community amenities. What assurances would the city have that these would be implemented or continued into the future? Other amenities listed in the design statements, such as green spaces and walking trails, are not included in the master development plan or the design documents. How can, how can we properly evaluate this?" And that's another fear. I mean, you've got all these so-called things that you wanna do, and we have absolutely no guarantee that it's gonna happen. You know, we've been asking the owner over there to improve that property for, I know of, at least almost nine years, and there's still nothing that's been, I can see that's positive. We've had issues with them cutting the grass. How are we gonna get them to spend $14 million on an apartment?
Right. I'm getting the money. And we do have the scientific team to deal with any bio issues and things like that. I think your question was, is this a guarantee? Everything that is in the plan are federal initiatives. This isn't a pie in the sky or a dream or something like that. These are initiatives that are being set forth by the feds and other international estate agencies. Every detail of the project is, it just happens to be a lo, a large parcel where it can encumber a lot of things for public good. And it is gonna take a bunch of back and forth with the Planning Commission just because it is such a large project. We didn't plan to come in and rezone the whole building and have to do every single, you know, we're a startup company as well, but we do have the staff. We have the Department Corps of Engineers subcontractor that's gonna do the build and everything. So it's not a figment of our imaginations. This is a very real project, and we do have an international finance agency that helps SpaceX, and they're only helping unicorn companies. They're only assisting unicorns.
Okay, well, in fairness, just let me ask this question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what I hear from you is... So, what I hear from you is, you have a startup company, and you're looking to get financing from, in particular, an entity that only deals with unicorn companies, and you don't have anybody under contract for any of this work right now, and you can't tell us when this project that you're proposing could be completed? Like, normally, if we have developers come in here and they say, "Okay, here's my proposal, and I'm gonna have this built the entire facility within X amount of time." Do you have an X amount of time for us?
No, no, ma'am, we don't, at this particular point in time. However, we can go and build a fence for you guys within the next couple of weeks. You see what I'm saying, oh, as far as the fence goes over there, to assist, assist the public with their issues with the property owner, because it's a big, it, this, it's a touchy deal that's going on. I just came into the picture last year, and so I know it's very touchy, but we do have the staff to pull this off without the public having to pay for the building.
I would, I would remind you that the apartment building that your address is listed in is fifty percent burned out. There's been eight fires there, uh, reported in the last six years, the last one a year ago. Fifty percent of the apartment complex that is where you get your mail is burned out. Graffiti on the walls, trash in the streets, broken glass everywhere. That is the kind of property that Mr. Berani owns and operates. And you are telling us that he has the staff to clean up the mall suddenly, and after, he's owned it since 2011, and it has not made any significant improvements, in fact, it's continued to go downhill. So, I think your statement is disingenuous at best. I don't think that there's much truth to the fact that his staff is capable of cleaning up that mess.
Right, our company is capable, Darren Miles of S&amp;M Associates is a twenty-year federal subcontractor for FEMA, the Department of Energy, and other federal agencies, and he is the one that is doing the build-out on this.
That's the gentleman in Biloxi, Mississippi? That's where their headquarters is?
Yes.
It is, it, it's not really a question, I was just hoping, you know, yes, it's in Biloxi.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted you to know where the headquarters of your firm is. And, uh, there's no listing on their website that you're a client, they don't have any listing that they've done any kind of work like this before, they've done federal contracts on military bases, that's the only work that they show that they have a history of doing, and yet you say that you're contracting with them to do a remodel on a mall in Midwest City. I find that odd.
They do FEMA emergency housing as well, and they do re, uh, retrofits of existing Air Force bases and things like that. And they were going to come to our next meeting from, I talked to the gentleman, and he's coming from Atlanta, if we had got that continuance to fix the little small details, he requested us to do that as well, so.
These are not small details.
Okay, Ms. Maxwell, go ahead.
If we, if this is denied at this point, can they come back at a later date, or are we just done? Because we could, uh, um, we could do this all night, guys, um, and, and.
Councilwoman Maxwell, if it is denied, then under city ordinance, there is a six-month buffer period, they would not be able to reapply again for another six months, but once that six-month time period passes, yes, a, a new application could come in.
Okay, there's a couple of parliamentary procedures that I'm gonna have to follow. If there's, is there any other person that wants to talk, this is a public hearing, about this particular issue?
There's a gentleman in the back.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Thomas R. Galbraith, 913 Lotus Avenue in Midwest City. Come on, boys and girls, let's don't play this game again. I've been on this thing since he was given a fifty-seven thousand dollar deal. I was there, he looked at it and threw it in the trash. Every time that we go do something with that mall, he comes up with another lawyer and another, and another plan. Let's get that mall on the ground, we're tired of it. Everybody in Midwest City wants to see that mall on the ground. Let's call a boat on this and boat it down.
Thank you, Mr. Albreth. With that being said, I am closing the, uh, public hearing on this particular issue, and chair to entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we deny this.
I have a properly formed motion, and I have a second, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Eads?
Yes, deny.
Byrne?
Yes, deny.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes, deny.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes, denied.
I believe that's a unanimous consent, uh, this subject is closed for right now. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience.
Point of personal convenience.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Point of personal convenience, five minutes, please.
This man will be recessed for five minutes, please.
Thank you, sir.
Every time I have one of these five minute resources, it turns into thirty, so. I'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Okay, before we get started on our next agenda item, we, our honoree finally showed up. Ladies and gentlemen, Merle Davis.
What's he dressed for?
He dressed like he was going to the lake, Mr. Mayor. You know anything about that?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Merle. And he's worked for the city a number of years and is retiring. Why did you, when did you say full? Okay. I think, well, we don't have the microphone, so we're just gonna have to wing it here. Whereas, Merle Davis has faithfully served the city with dedication and commitment for over twenty-two years, beginning his distinguished career in two thousand and two, during which time he consistently demonstrated a positive attitude, a willingness to take on additional responsibilities, always ready to lend a helping hand to his coworkers. Whereas, Merle has proven to be a true team player, treating the public with the utmost courtesy and. And elected officials. Yeah, yeah. Embodding professionalism in all his interactions. Whereas, Merle has taken time to effectively communicate important issues regarding hazardous household waste, street sweeping and with to the appropriate parties, ensuring the smooth operation and safety of all our, our, our community. And whereas, his exemplary. I've known Merle for a long time. When I was a police officer. Exemplary service has made a significant and positive impact on the city operations and the well-being of its residents. Whereas, Merle's supervisors have nothing but good to say, things to say about his performance, recognizing his exceptional worth. Except showing up for council on time. That's right. And reliability. Therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, hereby proclaim July twenty-third as Merle Davis Day, and ask that all citizens recognize him for his dedication to the city and thank him for his service. Now you get the city man.
Only time he sees me is when he's in trouble. I'm not sure I've ever seen you actually in trouble, which is a good thing. But in special recognition of Merle Davis for loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Midwest City, May thirtieth, two thousand and two through December fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Merle is, I don't know of a piece of equipment that Merle can operate in the city. I mean, you, you're a great operator. You've been in multiple departments in the city and everywhere you've been, you've done a great job. And I'm gonna miss you at the compost facility, because when I take my brush out there, I know somebody in Gaylord, he's not too far behind you, which. But you guys do a great job out there and it's, and it's a great operation. You provide compost for the city and for the citizens, and it's really awesome. I'm glad you're doing that. With that, congratulations from, from the city manager's office.
Probably doesn't. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into discussion item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing, discussion, consideration of possible action of approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter forty-three, Water Sewer Sewage Disposal, Stormwater Quality, Article Three, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division Five, Other Provisions Relating to Taps and Connections, Section forty-three dash one eighty-two, Connection to Sewer Manes in Sections nine, ten, and in Sections nine, ten, Township eleven north, Range one west. Section forty-three, one eighty-three, Connections to Sewer Manes in Sections one, Township eleven north, Range two west, Section one. Section forty-three, one eighty-four, Reserved for repealer and severability. And then you were asked to talk about the further information item two, Brandon.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we want to talk about the further information?
Yeah, go ahead and do further information.
So the further information is our monthly building report? Do you have specific questions regarding the monthly building report?
I do. With regard to discussion item five and our consideration of the east side sewer piece, I wanted to know if any of the proposed building permits that were listed in further information, item number two, were building permits that are within that space, in the area for the east side sewer proposal that we're considering as discussion item five? If possible, Mr. Bundy.
Yes. The, there are two duplexes that are listed as Josie Circle. Those are in the moratorium area. And, let me see. Of the. Let's remodel. Okay, sorry. There are three that are listed for the new construction. I know one to be in the moratorium area. I'm not sure of the other two.
Okay, so two duplexes plus one?
Yes.
Okay.
At a minimum.
So those proposals that are put forward right now, were they put forward with their own independent sewer?
So the du, the duplex is in a subdivision that was before the moratorium. And so the moratorium language allows for those houses to be connected to our public sewer. The one, the one singular house that I know of is on a lot that could allow septic. But I'm not sure of the particulars. I talked to the gentleman that's associated with this house, and I have talked to him about the sewer moratorium. And if the moratorium was not lifted, he would have to have a septic system.
Okay.
Okay. I can talk later.
Can we turn up the volume on the mic by chance? And. So Councilwoman Maxwell, my question went to the piece of, previously we've, and I'm just gonna tie this up as an explanation for why I asked my question. We've had developers come before us stating that, you know, they were not wanting to develop in the area of the east side sewer moratorium, because they did not want to put in independent sewer systems. They wanted to have the moratorium lifted so that they could join on to the public sewer and that they were, it was causing a delay in development in that area. And so since we had this report from Mr. Bundy's office for further information for this meeting, and that reflects the building permits that were put forward, residential and commercial for June twenty twenty-four, I wanted to see if there was any, any permits being put forward that were going towards putting in independent sewer systems, or if they were essentially hoping that the moratorium would be lifted and they were going to add on, et cetera. Mr. Bundy explained a couple of them were applicants from before the moratorium was put in place, so they'd be allowed to add on to the sewer system. And one of the other ones that's in the area of consideration had basically talked with him about the options, and he'd been advised that unless the moratorium was lifted, he would have to put in an independent sewer. So that's, that's why I was asking the question. Is that a fair estimation, Mr. Bundy?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, let me, I gotta scroll back up to my item here. It's a big agenda packet. Take a minute. All right, so this item is related to the next two items, the following items, discussion number four and discussion number five. I would like to ask the council to consider all three items intertwined. And anything that we discuss here would pertain to discussion item four and five, most likely. So this is an ordinance.
So do we need to read those items, Mr. City Attorney?
Because of the public meeting portion of this, that and the public hearing that is required, mine's working real well. Based on the fact that we have to have a public hearing on this, no, we can't consider them all at once. We gotta consider them individually.
Yeah, and I.
Thank you.
This item is the ordinance that will start to raise funds for sewer moratorium issue, which is to, the necessary improvements to our sewer list station and some of the collection system. This ordinance was originally presented in, in March by the, to the Planning Commission, and then it was tabled or take no action from the city council. Since that time, there has been a consensus number. I will say that the number, I'm sure there's a lot of people in the, behind me that would like to speak to this item. The number will never be a perfect number. This was a consensus. This was a compromise. I think this is a good number. I think this is something that the city can live with, and we can move forward and get ourselves out of the moratorium. We can build ourselves out of the moratorium. The, the difference between the March ordinance that was presented and this one tonight is that residential homes are gonna be based off the square foot of the total building area. And I would like to clarify that in the ordinance that was presented, it just said square foot. So we'd like to amend that to say total building area. That total building area is something that all builders turn in on their building permit. It's not something that we have to interpret as staff. That is something that is easily measurable. So what we'll do is we'll take that number, multiply it times a dollar seventeen, and that will be the development fee for single family. They will have to pay that when they pick up their building permit. It's as simple as that. Now for commercial, or for non-residential, I should say, non-single-family residential, that could be any residential that's three or more units, commercial, industrial, agricultural uses, we're gonna base it off of the water meter. And the reason for that is there are a lot of different variables that are associated with water use and sewer use from a commercial standpoint. I use the example that many of you have heard is the Dollar General that is at Anderson in Reno, does not use very much sewer. But in that same footprint, you could put, say, a laundromat, which would use a lot of sewer, and that would be a big impact. And so by basing it off the water meter, we can, basically, all the water they take in generally goes into the sewer, and so we can, in effect, know what their rate will be. It also is a true serum, in a way, because they're presenting what they want, what size they want in a water meter, and so they will give us the number. If they short themselves, that's on them, because, say, you put a laundromat and you put a very small water meter, you're gonna have a lot of unhappy customers and you're not gonna be successful. So that is our reasoning from that. The water meter number is also something that we commonly take at the building permit stage. So that's how this ordinance is, is set up. I will say that this number is, this number presented was used to determine what the sewer rate increase would be, which would be the next item, which Public Works will present right behind me. So we don't necessarily, or we're not prepared to change this number. This is the number that everything is based on.
I have three questions to ask you, Brandon. And like I said, I appreciate everything that you and your staff, working with Public Works and the city attorney has done to get us to this point. Is this fair to the city?
Yes.
Is it fair to the citizens?
Yes.
Is it fair to the developers?
Yes.
I'm concerned. We're, we're proposing increasing the rates for the citizens to three dollars and seventy-seven cents a month, starting in May of twenty twenty-five.
That, that is what was proposed, and, or what is proposed, and I'll have Carrie explain that in the next item, or if she can explain it now, I'm not sure.
I just wanna voice my, my concern with that. I have no problems with us trying to move forward. We need to move forward. My concern is that we are putting, we're, we're, we're saying the city's gonna pay so much, the builders and the other people are gonna pay so much, and then the citizens have to pay three seventy-seven. My concern is, we just raised rates for the cit, uh, the citizens for water. Now, I know this will not go into effect until May twenty twenty-five, if I read that correctly. I'm concerned that we keep putting stuff on the citizens, even though we made some, and I say we, because we allowed the pipes to go in that were not, well, we, we, I don't think we were being, we were looking forward in our thinking when we were planning. That should not be on the citizens. That we made a decision, and I, you probably wasn't here, nobody was probably here, but we own it. We own it when we take these positions. My concern, I think everybody needs to make some money, but at the expense of the citizens. Three seventy-seven, and I've heard, several people have said, well, it's just a little bit. Well, it may be a little bit if you live, or you, your income is a certain amount. We have fifteen percent of our population, that may not sound like much, live below the poverty level. Those people on, on fixed incomes, three dollars and seventy-seven cents a month, and I said, that's the, that's what we're kind of predicting. It's a lot, especially when we just raised water rates. I, I just had to say that. I just had to put that on record. I'm concerned about that. And you guys, with your brilliant minds, I think we could have done a little better. I understand we have to do increases. It costs a living. So soon.
One thing that, if you wanna mention this, I know Carrie's gonna mention it and Paul, but we did put into the rate increase the ability for them to bring their taxes in and get some rebate from that.
I hate hearing that. I hate hearing that. You know, the average person worked really hard with some pride about, I need to be able to pay my bills. And to say, and I, I'm grateful for the programs. They need to be there. But let's not lead with that. That's kind of insulting to people who are out there trying not to ask for assistance. It's, it's a. I'm sorry. I got emotional there, and I will apologize for that. But to hear that, just think about the people who are, think, who were asking to increase their, their bill, to tell them, well, you go to the city and ask for some help. Glad the program is there. But we need to think about our people a little bit more. And I know we got to spend the money. I know we have to, we have to move forward. I just needed to be on record as saying that.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, I'm done.
And, and we, we are very sensitive to that. I can speak for myself, and I'm sure Carrie and Paul will speak to that as well. We don't do this lightly, at all.
Councilwoman Maxwell, I support where you're coming from a hundred percent. And I think one thing, I've only been on the council for four years, but one thing, and I'll speak for myself, I'm not speaking for anybody else. One thing that I don't think that we've done very well as council is address issues with the water and the sewer in a timely manner. And what I mean by that is, we've needed to raise rates more than we have over the past several years, and we just haven't done it. Because we try to pride ourselves, Midwest City tries to pride ourselves, on having some of the best rates in the metro area, I would say. Is that correct? And I personally would have preferred, especially with the water rate, I was against the water rate increase, because I think we raised it too quickly, and we should have done it over a period of time, spread it out, which is exactly what I think you're trying to say on this. Unfortunately, we're to a point to where we've got, we need to make movement to get the city moving forward. And three seventy-seven for the sewer rate is a whole lot cheaper than what we just did for the water increase.
And if I could, I apologize. Rick, were you finished? I didn't mean to. What I was gonna say is, when Paul and Carrie came to us before, it was a matter of the PowerPoint presentation that Carrie put forward showed that we had been operating in the red. So it's not an issue of making money as much as it was that we were operating in the red, from what they presented to us. I will say, what bothers me about this proposal is, you know, in law, and, of course, the attorney can speak to this. They talk about like when you settle a case, if both sides are marginally happy but marginally unhappy, you've reached a good resolution. Okay, nobody's ever completely happy. And, you know, I kind of feel like that's where we're going with this proposal. My problem with it is on the commercial side of it, because my problem with analyzing the water sewage usage is, you know, I have a constituent who's come to me in the recent weeks talking about the increase in his bill for utilities from the city based upon the recent utility increases, and specifying like, hey, I'm, I'm in the, the, excuse me, I'm not gonna phrase this exactly right, but like the one unit water usage type thing. I only use water for these specific things. I'm only a, a single-person household. I don't put out much in the way of sewer. I don't put out much in the way of trash. You know, I've called and the city said, well, you can switch your trash can out and get a smaller trash can, and he's like, okay, but I'm still, you know, I'm still paying this chunk of expenses. To me, you know, we could look at the same thing and go, okay, well, we're gonna base what you are paying on a total usage concept. Like, okay, if you're between the one to two, this is your cost. If you're between the three to four, this is your cost. I mean, and it seems like we're doing this with commercials, so I'd like to understand that piece a little bit more, Mr. Bundy. So have you done the calculations to figure out that on these non, um, single-use residential and/or commercial, that where the, where the comparison is between doing it on a, a flat rate increase, or, and like a flat rate that's paid at the build point versus on usage for water and sewage? And does it come out, how, how does it come out in comparison to doing it those two different ways with regard to everybody else besides the, the single residential?
We, we didn't look at the commercial rates. I think it gets really complicated, and, and that is something that Carrie's an expert on. I think it gets really complicated and and that is something that Carrie's an expert on. But i- in in regards to your constituent that is maybe a small, like an insurance agent, for example. Um there's not a lot of commercial out there, but if he were to or he or she would to build an office, it'd be the one time, so they would just roll that into their construction loan. And and they would take that as a matter of of business of building their office. But they wouldn't have to pay a monthly fee.
So they're not gonna suffer the same three dollar and seventy-seven cent increase starting May twenty twenty-five that single-use residential are?
That that will be Carrie's, yeah, she's she's the expert on the rates and they're.
Yeah, I think I think I can help clarify. So Carrie Evenson, Assistant Public Works Director. So on the development fee, that's kind of, you can kind of envision it more like a a one-time connection fee. So they're paying that 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 fee in order to connect, to basically use our system, right? And then the rates are then the ongoing charges that they see on a monthly basis. And so the 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 way the rates are set up, like we talked about with water, there's a base rate for residential and commercial. And both of those will see, and we'll talk about this in in the next item, but both of those will see increases. But the other thing that will see an increase is the cost per thousand above two thousand. And that's really where the commercial entities see that cost increase. Because they're using, in some cases, much more than two thousand gallons per month. And so for every thousand gallons above two thousand gallons, they're being charged that three dollars and seventy-two cents per per thousand gallons. Um plus, they are getting, um you know, there's the capital improvement charge and the sewer charge that are on a cost per thousand as well. So while we give you a number that says what the residential costs, because that's a little bit easier, because we can base it on a min- a customer using the minimum, using two thousand gallons or less, it's harder to tell you what that effect will be on commercial because it varies so widely between entities. That laundry facility is gonna use a lot more water, produce a lot more wastewater than your insurance agent will. And so that that bill is gonna be widely different.
So let me let me try to feed this back to you, Carrie, and make sure I'm understanding it, okay? So if I'm a, if I want to go out and build a single-use residence, it's a regular house for me and mine. I'm going to pay the connect fee.
The development fee, yes ma'am.
The development fee, okay? The connect fee is kind of how you were phrasing it, so I'm just, yeah.
I just worry attorneys get worried when I use looser terms, so, but yes, ma'am.
The development fee.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
He's smacking his lips.
Right, exactly.
Okay, um and then they're just going to have the regular three dollar and seventy-seven cent per month cost increase as everybody who already lives in a single-family residence does.
Right, so so if they are using two thousand gallons or less based on their winter usage, then yes, that's what they would see in their monthly increase for the for the sewers, three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Then conversely, people who are non-single-family residential and commercial, they get the development fee.
Yes, ma'am, development fee.
And then they're on a different schedule based on usage essentially. And you guys have calculated kind of where that needs to be in order for it to be contributing to the cost um for the service as well as for us to be moving forward to have enough funds in order to do repairs and so forth that we need to do throughout the city.
Right, so.
Is that a fair way to put it?
Yes, ma'am, so the development fee for residential based on the square footage, for commercial based on water meter size, again, because of factors. So when you're looking at what that development fee charge is for those water meter sizes, there's a model that Freeza Nichols helped us with that basically looks at their contribution and sets that out as far as what those fees should be for those entities. And then for the rates, for those entities that use more than two thousand gallons per month, then what they'll see, they'll see that minimum charge increase. Then they'll also see a cost per thousand gallon increase, which is forty, well, let me do my math, I can't do math in my head when I'm worried about council, sorry. Um it's about fifty-nine cents per per thousand gallons. So you can see if you're using ten thousand, a hundred thousand gallons a month, that's a fairly significant increase for a a commercial entity then on that cost per thousand.
But what we're proposing is consistent or still less than what our neighboring municipalities are doing based on your analysis. Would that be fair?
Yeah, so looking at our rates, we're competitive with our neighboring entities. I did not prepare the comparison chart for this one.
That's okay, I'm just, based on your expertise. So my concern is also that one, we're not going to, by doing this, be causing people to want to move from Midwest City um or not build in Midwest City or not bring business to Midwest City. That's that's what I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am.
And you feel like we're competitive, I guess would be the best phrase for it, or consistent with our neighboring municipality rates with what we're proposing here?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Um thank you, Carrie, thank you, Mr. Bundy. Mr. Moore, you signed up to speak on this particular issue, you wanna come before council?
Good evening, council. Jeff Moore, five sixteen Cedar Drive. I'd about decided not to say anything. I feel like, as y'all said, I don't think no one's happy. So uh maybe it is a decent um arrangement on prices, but we have gotta be concerned about the number of permits that we're receiving. I mean, Susan just mentioned that uh we don't want citizens not to move here because the water bill's a little high, but I mean, last year alone, we only had, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, thirty-three building permits. Most of our other cities around us had over three hundred. We probably hadn't seen a hundred permits in the last four years, a hundred permits. So our housing stock's suffering. If you read your comp, the comprehensive plan, I'd encourage all of you to really read it a lot. I've I've studied it more than I should over the last few months, but it's been a pretty good plan and the comp plan even goes back in steel states in there today that we have adequate sewer today. I think it says we're only at half our MCM or whatever it is, I think. But it, I've got it on my phone, but it states that we have adequate sewer today. When the landowners came out here to invest in Midwest City, the developers, we were told that there was adequate water and sewer. You know, we spent literally a a lot of money investing in this town, buying property. I think there's a half dozen builders that invested, spent the money and wasn't aware that we're gonna have to turn around and get hit uh, you know, for these other fees. Some of these properties, um I mean, it's it's millions of dollars that will be added to the development cost. And then this is just my opinion, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna stop development. I mean, we've only had six permits this year so far, six single-family residential homes. We can't stop it much more. I mean, or we're just gonna be, you know, passed by. So I'd like to see it resolved tonight. I mean, I think it is a step forward to to move ahead and get things moving, but I think it's gonna stop development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. With that being said, Chair entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
I'd inter, I make a motion to approve with uh one additional or one change to the ordinance as we've been presenting. And that'll be under uh forty-three dash one eighty-four, section A, that we add in there that to connect the public sewer in the areas identified in figure forty-three, one eighty-four-one in the amount of one dollar and seventeen cents per square foot, that we add these four words of total building area. Can I make a motion on that?
Second.
I have a properly formed motion. Do I have any further discussion? With that being said, I'd like a real call vote, please.
Eads.
Yes.
Byrne.
Yes.
Maxwell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Favors.
Yes.
Dukes.
Yes, I believe that's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Uh ladies and gentlemen, this is a huge deal. As you know, we've been dealing with this for several months and uh and uh had a lot of input. I wanna thank Rick Favors for his insight in suggesting the the uh rate that we're going with and uh and also the hard work that the staff has put into this. It's arguous and I want to uh add one thing. Unfortunately, councils before us has kicked this can down the road. And unfortunately, it landed in our lap. Don't think for a minute that we don't take rate increases seriously because not only does it affect you, it affects us as well. I know at least three of us on the councils, if not four, are on fixed incomes as well. But we have to set our feelings aside on our personal issues and do what's best for the city and the fifty-nine thousand residents of this city. And uh so again, I wanna thank the staff for their hard work. Uh it's been arguous, it's been tenuous. There's been more discussion than any of you would ever care to participate in uh over this. So with that being said, uh we'll move on to item number four, Mr. Lyon.
Thank you, Mayor. Item four, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter forty-three, Water Sewer Sewage Disposal and Stormwater Quality. Article three, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division eight, usage rates and charges, section forty-three dash two-two-four, sewer user charge, section forty-three, two-thirty, capital improvement charges and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Streets.
City manager, Honorable Mayor and Council, obviously what you have before you is the other half of this very important decision. I want you all to understand that those folks that were involved in the the development of this fee, the development of the development fee, the development of the rate increase are very invested in the outcome. It's not easy for us, just understand that we we if we know the decisions that that we bring to you that you will have to make carry a lot of weight. It's a lot of weight sometimes, it's it's hard to manage. Ultimately, please know that when Brandon, myself, Carrie, Sarah, the city management team, our city attorney, when we take these things under consideration, we do it with a keen eye, understanding that this will impact every single customer in our city. Whether it be houses that aren't built yet, schools that aren't built yet, commercial properties that aren't built yet, every single customer is affected or impacted by this decision. I appreciate the fact that you all at least have taken the first step with item number three. What you have before you is item number four, again, it's the other half. This is related to the rate itself, the sewer rate, it's gonna be changed or affected. This rate increase is eighteen point eight percent. Carrie is gonna be able to provide some details related to that rate. What you have in front of you is the handout that's also projected up top. If you have questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to ask us because that's what we're here for. Carrie, thank you very much for the effort she made and Freeza Nichols, who is in the office, if you don't mind raising your hand. The Freeza Nichols folks that are here took a lot of time to help us get to this point and Carrie was able to put it all together and get it in front of you. And I appreciate the effort that they made to do that. Carrie?
Carrie, can you, you kind of glossed over it really quick, but
Okay.
the winter rate.
Yes.
Can you explain that so everybody knows what the winter rate is?
Yes, so in the ordinance, the winter usage is calculated during tho- those winter months. And I believe that's December, January, February. Um I'll have to double check that, but it's those months. Yeah, Sarah will know for sure, but it's those months when you're not doing outdoor use it, you're not doing outdoor watering. It's really statistically when the water usage and thus the wastewater usage or or discharge is the is the least, right? And so we take those, that average of those three months and look at where that's at on your water usage. What, where where do you fall? If you fall in the less than two thousand gallons per month on average, then for that year, my understanding, your rate is set at that less than two thousand gallons per month figure. And so you would pay that residential base rate. Um if you use more than that during that winter um period, then your rate is set at whatever that average is and then you pay that for the year. Right, don't fill your swimming pool in those winter months or um water your grass. Thank you, Sarah, November, December and January. February as well. I knew I missed a couple. Yes, sir, it does.
Paul, we're getting ready to raise uh rates on the individuals in Midwest City forever.
Correct.
And we're pretty much in in a pickle and we're gonna have to do it one way or the other. But I would ask you this, just one question. For people who are going to suffer because of this and have to pay higher bills, will this be enough for the city to promise that Midwest, the citizens of Midwest City will have good water and sewage systems for the foreseeable future?
So I'm gonna be very careful about how I answer that question. What I will, what I will tell you is that currently, with the support of council and the city manager's office and a lot of other folks, we've started a study, a water master plan, a sewer master plan, and actually we're gonna look at a contract tonight for the stormwater master plan. What I will tell you is that we've done the best we can to put the rates at a level that will cover operational costs and what we perceive or believe to be our capital costs associated with repairs and maintenance. The master plans are the tool we are going to use to make decisions going forward that will help us be informed and ultimately communicate to our constituents what these utility rates that are being collected actually do. I think it's important to note, I didn't say it to begin with, I kind of wanted to make sure Carrie had an opportunity to talk, but you hit on a very important point and that is, I think there will be some that assume that this rate change will be the last, this rate increase will be the last. That's not necessarily the case. Unfortunately, when that sewer master plan is completed for the whole city, as Ms. Eads tried to make sure that we addressed early on in this process before the moratorium was established, that master plan's complete, that's gonna look at all the needs across the entire city. So any failing sewer infrastructure that hasn't been either, that either has maintained, not been maintained, or is at end of life, we can appropriately fund the replacement or repair. When that happens, when the master plan is complete, we hope in a year's time, then we'll have some information to come back to you, but there is a possibility that the rates will have to be touched again to subsidize or support the additional activities required in order to make sure or ensure that our system meets the demands of our customers, every single customer in the city.
That is a brutally and honest answer. But in your opinion, we don't have any other choice but to approve this rate increase tonight based on the conditions that exist currently, correct?
Correct. with a development fee and this rate increase.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm going to speak to this because Mr. Streets just alluded to what my ask was. My ask has been, and this is part of why we put the East Side Sewer Moratorium in place, is to try to get back the full city sewer study. Because I know we have a significant amount of sewer infrastructure that is at or well beyond its allotted useful life. Would that be a fair statement, Mr. Streets?
That is correct.
Okay. And therefore, we know that we have expenses to replace that infrastructure coming at us. We know that in order to allow additional building in the East Side Sewer Moratorium section that can tie onto our sewer line, we have to correct and expand that line out there. We
Increase capacity in the eastern sewer shed, yes.
That's a better way to phrase it. Thank you, Mr. Streets. But, you know, they came to us before with the lifts and showing the amount of demand, the amount of load already on those lifts.
Spiritual sessions.
And that, you know, we're at a critical point there, which is why we said, okay, we've got to serve the customers we're already serving, so we need to put things on hold. My concern with this proposed rate increase is the piece of, I don't like us having to tinker with the rates so close to when we've already done a rate adjustment of another utility, but also I don't like us having to tinker with the rates repeatedly. And so I would prefer that we knew what it was going to cost us and we got the rate increase set correctly at the outset. We don't have, and I want to make this point clear, we don't have the balance of the city sewer study back from our chosen contractor, Freezing Nichols, yet.
That's correct.
We have asked, am I correct, Mr. Streets, to get that as soon as possible, essentially?
That is, that is correct.
And where are we on that piece right now? Carrie?
Yeah. So as you can imagine, there's a large portion of our city that has not yet been studied. So in, to add on to what we did on the East Side, we've had to do some flow monitoring on the West Side because you want to know how much, we'll call it non-sewage, is entering into your system through inflow and infiltration. And so they set flow monitors out, and we needed some rainy periods and we needed some dry periods to see what our flows look like. We have that now. They've completed the flow monitoring work, so they're taking that back to start working on the citywide model, building on what they used on the East Side, expanding it to the entire city. And in the meantime, the other thing that they're working on is they're working on manhole inspections to get some information on the depth of the manhole that goes into the model, but also the condition of the manhole, because we need to know what those look like. They're, they're an indication, you know, if our manholes are looking like they need to be replaced, it's a good indication that going along with it, the pipes will need to be replaced as well. So they're gathering all of that information right now so that we can then look at that model and figure out where are we at or exceeding capacity, and where do we potentially have a little bit more room for growth.
And when do we anticipate we'll know the answers?
So we are looking at next year to have a completed master plan back.
When next year?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know that I have. I will have to get you the exact date. I'm sorry, I should have asked.
I respectfully need to know that, though, and I will tell you why. And I will tell you that with the representatives from Freezing Nichols in the audience, okay? I think it is borderline, and I will say this, negligent of us to move forward and make a determination where we're investing in sewer until we have the whole picture, first of all. Second of all, it saddens me, honestly, to note that we have a proposal coming in discussion items to give an almost eight hundred thousand dollar contract to Freezing Nichols to do a stormwater study citywide, which I don't question for a minute we need. Mr. Streets and I have had this conversation. I agree completely, we need it. But I am saddened to go with a contractor who has yet to provide us a study that I believe puts us in a position of being almost negligent to make a determination on what we're going to do with the sewer throughout Midwest City at this point.
So I understand where you're coming from on that completely. But we'll also say that because of the detail that's necessary to produce a quality report, there needs to be certain amount of time for monitoring and for studying and for condition assessment. Now, we do, we are paying for this out of ARPA funds, so there is an August twenty-twenty-five deadline to try to get these funds spent through Waterboard. So part of that is going to be, you know, having a degree of this plan completed. I don't want to, I don't feel comfortable giving you an exact date right now, and I should, I apologize. I should have had that date ready for you. But I will definitely have that date for you as soon as I have a chance to get that tonight, if at all possible. But what, the other thing that I wanted to mention about this sewer user increase is when we discussed this development fee and the rate piece prior to this time for the East Side Sewer Study, one of the things that the council asked for was that any increase for capital that was needed for the East Side was matched with funding for capital improvements needed on the, in the rest of the city.
Right.
So that's included in this.
Right.
And our hope is that with this increase, that anything that comes out of the citywide master plan will be tempered with what we're being asked, what's being asked here for the increase.
Well, with all due respect, we have representatives from Freezing Nichols here, so perhaps one of them can tell us when they anticipate delivering us the citywide sewer study.
Okay.
Before we try to vote on this issue.
Fall of next year.
We're right back in the seat. There's, you know, that are the contract.
Yep.
And I think it's important, I will tell you that, that I know there are a couple things that we probably need to recognize, and the fact is sewer master plans, like the one that we've undertaken with the detail that it covers, is not something you do in twelve months. The good news is, when this whole process started, when you raised your voice and said, hey, what about the rest of the city? We already started that. City manager's office said, let's not wait to do the master plan. Let's get this thing started. So we're actually ahead of the curve in some ways, but it takes a lot of time to gather the information. And I'm not trying to defend Freezing Nichols. They're a great contractor, a great engineer. But the reality is what they're doing wouldn't go any faster with any other engineering firm. And the work that's being done by Freezing Nichols on this part of it, completely different staff than we'll be handling. We're not going to see a delay because of the, the stormwater master plan. I also want to point out, Rick brought up a great point earlier, and, and obviously I'm sensitive to it. The reality is, when we talk about rate changes, the longer you delay it, the bigger the bump. Dollars today are cheaper than dollars tomorrow. No matter how you slice it, that's, that is true, whether we like it or not. The eighteen percent, eighteen point eight percent that we're talking about tonight is at least a step, it's a step in the right direction, helps us get through the moratorium, but it also is an incremental change that you won't have to tack on to any potential changes in the future. So let's say that the recommended change would have been around ten to fifteen percent. We don't know what it's going to be. If we had to do the ten, fifteen percent plus the nineteen percent on top of that, that's a huge change and doesn't really allow folks to make adjustments in their budgets to handle that. Now, I know that's not much solace for anybody that has to absorb that cost, but the reality is making this decision today gets us out of the moratorium and allows us. The other issue we've got is we've got infrastructure that needs to be repaired and replaced that we can't per currently fund, so.
I agree completely with that, and it goes towards Councilwoman Maxwell's point of, you know, the sticker shock, if you will, that is passed ultimately to our citizenry. Now, one of the things, you know, you phrase it in terms of being able to plan for the budget, but in a lot of circumstances, Mr. Streets, we have citizens who can't make a plan to the budget. It's a matter of, do I pay my water bill, or do I feed my kids? Or do I pay the rent to keep a roof over my head?
Absolutely.
Or are we living in the car? Which one, I mean, which one of these am I going to do?
Agreed.
So one of the things that we did in part, last time we did rate increase, in order to try to assist with this to some extent, was to say, okay, in a one calendar year per utility customer, you get a, a late payment waiver. I don't notice that we have that included with this proposed revision that we put forward. But, I mean, again, that's, I think, to use your word, small solace, but it is something to try to do when we have folks who can't make the payment.
And I think we can speak to that, actually. Sarah, you can correct this if you want, but I think that actually is the bill, the entire utility bill. We're not breaking it out for water or sewer, so.
Oh, it's just a one time for everything? Okay. Okay. So again, I completely understand the need. I do. And I do believe that we have delayed, and not we, but the city as a whole, has delayed creating capital improvement funds to be able to deal with fixing the infrastructure. And now here we are, in the case of my neighborhood, a lot of times, eighty years after it was installed, going, yep, it's way past its useful life, so it's fix and a fail. How are we going to pay to fix it? And the same thing with regard to the East Side. Even in more modern construction, we don't have a, what's what I'm looking for? A treasure trove, a, a treasure chest?
Treasure chest.
Thank you. Back there to, to fix what we've got going on with utility lines. So, you know, I say all this to say, again, I'm very concerned about what's going to happen when we get the citywide study and whether even what we have proposed here, as much as this is going to hurt a lot of our citizens, is even going to be enough, to follow up to your question, Mr. Thompson, to assure that they're paying this increase and they're suffering to pay this increase, but does that get them reliable sewer service or not?
There's two things that's being left out of this entire discussion. Number one, Public Works Administration has already got a program in place where they're identifying aged infrastructure and going in to replace it. They have so much built into their budget every year to do that. So that's an ongoing process and has been for a number of years. Number two, I would hope, and I get what you're saying, that before we ever go to board with another rate increase, whether it's with this council or another council, that everything possible, Ms. City Manager and Mr. Streets, that everything within our power to prevent that would take place in the budgetary process. And, and that means more money out of general fund into capital improvement, whatever it takes, before we go to these citizens and ask them for another rate increase.
Absolutely.
Like I said, it's unfortunate that it's fallen in our lap. We've been willing to take on this monster and do it diligently, but we can ill afford to come back to the citizens, and, and to your point, Ms. Eads, exactly, in two years.
Agreed.
And as for, so those two have got to equate.
I will tell you that the current staff that the city has and the efforts that are being made in finance, city manager's office, are, are in my opinion, better than we've ever had.
I agree.
In terms of putting money where it belongs and doing good planning, making sure that, that when something starts to, to fail, you're in front of it or ahead of it. Brandon has a great staff that have, have honestly improved the quality of the product we're getting in the field. Carrie has found more money single-handedly than, than anybody in a dozen years before her has, has ever been able to, to bring to the table, which frankly is the only reason that we're able to fund those studies and do the work that we're doing now. And what I will tell you is the reason that we're doing that is because we're all very passionate. We're invested in the community. Every single customer, guess what? No offense to Tim, no offense to our, our finance director or you to ma, or mayor. The reality is, I don't work for you. I work for every customer that lives in this city.
I'm so glad to hear you say that.
And everybody that works at Public Works, works in engineering, works in the police department, the fire department, will all tell you the exact same thing.
One of your biggest bosses is sitting right behind you, Orella, there.
I, I know her quite well.
You don't give her fence, bitch. You'll know her even better.
The parts are ordered and we have a court repair.
We're, we're working on that, Eads, trust me.
Thank goodness your fence is insured.
I heard about it that night. Okay.
Before we vote, one other thing, and we keep leaving this out, and, and the citizens voted last year to do the point four oh one five extension into capital improvements, and that'll, this will play a part of that. I mean, we'll have a little bit of opportunity to, to carve out some of that money for sewer if we need it. But this will help. Half this going to capital infrastructure will help the West Side as well.
Absolutely.
With that being said, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, can I ask one quick thing?
Absolutely.
Any, any businesses, residents, schools, anything that's outside of Midwest City, do they pay a higher fee than what our citizens do?
They do.
Whenever they pay for sewer, water connections, any of those things?
They do.
Will they be paying the same rate, higher rate?
Rate and a half.
Okay. Is that in the ordinance?
Yeah, rate, rate and a half, and there's very little of that.
Correct.
We tend not to get outside our boundaries much.
And Mr. Favors, yes, that is, it is codified in city ordinance.
Good. Thank you.
And Rick, you're correct about those months of, it depends on cycles, so it can be November as well.
Thank you.
Just how.
And once again, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Real call vote, please.
Eads?
Richard Gley, yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Maxwell?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Affirmed. My code, the count, the measure passes. Thank you guys very much, and we hope not to see you in that bowtie again. Item number five, Mr. Lyon.
All right. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five pertaining to the moratorium on new construction and new development that will connect to the Midwest City wastewater collection system that serves a portion of the East Side of Midwest City. Mr. Bundy?
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This is the third item that was discussed earlier, and since we passed the development fee and the sewer rate increase, all the staff is in agreement that we feel comfortable about recommending lifting the moratorium. Now, in this, in my memo, I outlined that the moratorium should be lifted on August twenty-second, or that's my recommendation, and that's based on the development fee is a thirty-day window. It goes into effect on August twenty-second. If there is a developer out there behind me or listening, and the earliest they could go to planning commission, no matter when we lift the moratorium, either tomorrow or August twenty-second, the earliest you'll see them is in September. That's just how the calendar works, so we're not delaying any developers by going to August twenty-second. What that allows for my staff to do is adjust all the permits and make all the adjustments necessary in the system.
Let me clarify something, Mr. Bundy. If I walked in tomorrow and I am plating Duke's estates, God forbid.
I've heard about this development for a while.
I have no funding. From my point, that was a joke, y'all.
Yes, very funny joke, sir.
You can't vote on it. You can't vote on it.
Bitcoin.
If I turned in my plat tomorrow, what's the timeframe before I get it back and start turning dirt?
So, if you, if, Matt is the expert on the calendar, but you turn in a plat application tomorrow, it's ready to go, it's September, it'll go before Planning Commission, early September, before you all at the September council meeting, and once it's approved, we get construction plans, and then you start, start the process.
So, it's very feasible, within ninety days of me walking in and handing that plat to you, I could be putting in streets?
Yes, yes.
That's all I need.
Brandon, one of the, one of the issues that we've, we've encountered in, it was well documented by our local press, is the fact that this moratorium put the skids to Choctaw Elementary School that services about seventy-five percent, that school is gonna have about seventy-five percent of Midwest City kids the way the boundaries are. This will enable them to move forward with that project, correct?
Correct, and, and we notified them as soon as it was gonna be on the agenda. And I believe they're here.
Superintendent's sitting right there.
And I, I believe they're, I will speak for them, I apologize if I say anything wrong, but I think they're very excited about this prospect, that they can move forward with their school, that they know where the sewer will go.
Well, the important thing for people to recognize, besides the developers, is that there are, a lot of the kids that will be going to that school are actually, because of the way the school district's set up, a lot of them are Midwest City kids.
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, go ahead, you have, Jared, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Did we get public input?
Yes, it's in the public discussion.
Can I ask that the motion include the date?
And it's not a public hearing, so.
The date, the date of lifting the moratorium, August 22nd.
Motion to approve with a date of August 22nd, 2024.
Effective date of August 22nd, is that what you're asking for?
We should have asked the superintendent, did he have anything to say?
I know you guys have been at long meetings today, because we've been listening to you, so, uh, thank you for letting us be here, but, um, the school that we are putting in is obviously right across the street from Midwest City. Um, but if you look at the western side of Choctaw and Oakmont Park school boundaries, it encompasses the eastern side of Midwest City. So, I could sit here and I could probably rattle off eighteen to twenty housing additions that are in existence already, not to mention additional ones that will be going in. So, we're, what we're going to build is a six hundred and fifty-capacity student elementary, so it'll be a pre-K through fifth grade building. Um, currently, most of those kids attend Nicoma Park schools, so some of those, if you just, the, the exact boundaries will have to be determined, it's a new school, so there'll be a process that we have to go through to, to get that. So, I can't give you an exact number or exact location, but just common sense shows where the building sits and all of the housing additions around it, Oakwood East, Oakwood, uh, Oakwood East Royale, Windsong, yada, yada, could go on. Um, it's gonna service, like they said, probably seventy-five percent, maybe higher, of Midwest City kids. Um, and that's where we really needed it, most of our schools are on the northern side of our boundary and to the west, I'm sorry, to the further east, and we needed something on the south and west end of ours, which would be the east side of Midwest City. So, just you guys, considering this is awesome for us, for our kids and for your residents, it, it could make a big difference for a lot of kids, so, again, thank you guys for considering it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I do have a properly formed motion, and, uh, second, do a roll call vote, please.
Eads.
Yes.
Byrne.
Yes.
Maxwell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Favors.
Yes.
Dukes.
Affirmative, the moratorium will be lifted. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into item number six, Mr. Lyon. Hmm, I'm, oh, sure, I'm good, I'm good, I'll finish out the agenda and then.
Okay, discussion, item number six, discussion, consideration, possible action, awarding a bid, awarding the bid and entering to a contract with Wind Construction, Inc., for one million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, and in two hundred and ten calendar days for the Mid-America Park Phase One project, a 2018 GeoBond project, city delegates the mayor to sign and execute the contract, Mr. Bundy.
I'm very.
Any questions or discussion?
This is basically using as much, nearly all the money in the GeoBond.
So, what do we budget for this versus what we're actually putting in right now?
It, it gets a little tough because there's two rounds of federal funding and grants, and Terry's the only one that can make clear case out of all of it. Uh, but we sat down with the finance director and we put all the pennies together and we can fund this part. The next phase, uh, we're working on that as well, we wanna build as much of this park as possible.
But, but what I'm hearing you say, pardon, I mean, um, what I'm hearing you say is, this is gonna use basically all the pennies we have left in the GeoBond fund, and this is Phase One, so we don't have the money in the GeoBond fund Phase Two.
That's the part I don't, I can't tell you for certain. You need one exact number.
Remember, that came in phases, and Terry got federal grant money for some of that, so this is kinda blended together. So, I think this is all GeoBond, but you're gonna use grant money in Phase Two.
Yes.
And then we put some money also on top of this for a basketball court.
Correct.
In the budget, I don't think that's in here, right?
No.
So, that'll be budgeted separately.
Okay, let me break it down, please.
Okay.
If we, if we GeoBond them, and the, and the funds that Terry has went out and got for us, can we complete this park absolutely basketball court without having to come up with independent city funds?
No, it, the GeoBond, as the park was presented in the master plan, was underfunded before the GeoBond even went to.
So, they're doing all bids to make sure that we can do the primary functions, and then there's all bids, because it came in over budget.
Correct.
So.
Okay, so I have to ask a question, sorry, really quick. So, instead of paying for Phase One, I mean, does it, but who wants to come up with a plan that allows us to complete a park there without maybe some of the bells and whistles that we had originally anticipated with regard to what we put forward as proposal for the GeoBond project? Because we keep having conversations about where we're gonna come up with money and how we're gonna distribute that, and if one more person tells me, why is it that we are paying money for Dick's Sporting Goods, and if we use the money we're paying for Dick's Sporting Goods on something else, as they read in the email, that we could be able to fund other things, I might just pull out all of my hair. So, that's why I'm asking the question. I don't want to see us come up with a proposal four months from now, six months from now, which actually will be six plus months from now, because it's two hundred and ten calendar days, so one hundred and eighty plus, um, to figure out how we're gonna find Phase Two. So, if we're gonna come up short on this entire project, I would rather see, figure out exactly what we can build for what we have and stop there.
Essentially, this is what's being presented, this is the basic park. This is the parking lot, a pavilion, the playground, um, a path to the trail that connects through there. This is going to be the, the basic bones of the park.
What, what you're missing is the frisbee stuff, right?
The, yeah, the disc golf.
My understanding is the disc golf is kind of.
So, is that what's coming in Phase Two, that we pay the worldwide combination of GeoBond funds and grant money that Terry charged down for?
So, Phase Two would be an enlarged, a larger parking lot, hopefully that's a problem we have. Uh, in the neighborhood park, which is in a different part of the greater park, it's closer to the neighborhood on the other side of the creek, which, I don't have a map, but it's a, it's a smaller area. Uh, Phase Two will also include a bathroom, and some other smaller amenities.
Is it accessible for people to go to the park or one that we lock up and they can't?
Accessible.
Fabulous. So, and I say that, by the way, because the one at W.P. Atkinson Park that we built the GeoBond dollar, we don't have an accessible bathroom, even though we built that whole hangar and everything, nobody can go to the bathroom there. So, um, the, the big draw for this park in particular, in addition to doing development in the areas, look at it, was that frisbee disc golf. You guys sold us on the idea of like, it would draw people into Midwest City, it's popular, blah, 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 and now I understand we've got no frisbee disc golf.
Correct, but I am a huge proponent of that, I think the disc golf is needed, it's absolutely required to activate that park properly.
Right.
To get the people into that park, we need disc golf, and I think we have a way to do it, but when it was bid out, the alternate was the disc golf course, uh, there was some, it was unclear, one of the pay items was unclear, and the base bidder, who's here tonight, um, put a high number to it, and so we could not fund it. But I think after some clarity and talking with the contractor, um, we can get that number down and we can bu- build the disc golf course. I want the disc golf course.
Right, okay, can we build the disc golf course with the money that we've got or money that we're gonna have to tear out the couch cushions to buy it?
I think I can answer that, the disc golf course costs like sixteen thousand bucks or something, it's not expensive. The expense was in, uh, clearing the trees, it was like, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars or something, it was, it was a very large amount of money. And I think if, if the engineers get to work on it, uh, they can design a way to put those golf posts between the trees and such as that, be a little more creative, and we don't have to clear four hundred thousand dollars worth of trees. Am, am I, is that correct, Brandon, Mr. Bundy?
That's absolutely correct, the, the, uh, the low bidder, Wind Construction, who we're, we're suggesting to be awarded tonight, bid nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for that item. It's, the only reason they did that item is because they didn't understand the item.
Okay.
I, I will say that, that this is gonna be the last GeoBond project that becomes for council. Part of the reason that we can't build as much of the park as originally envisioned is because of the time, and the inflation has eroded this. So, the longer we wait, or if we go back and redesign, we're gonna just lose more and more of the park. An example is, we have a separate contract with the playground manufacturer. The playground, uh, equipment is already constructed, but when they were designing it, they kept coming back and saying, prices went up, prices went up, and so we kept losing pieces of that playground. And so, I, I just really wanna, I mean, the playground equipment is in a warehouse, it's ready to be installed.
So, we've already contracted out equipment to go in the park, is what you're talking about, probably?
Yes, but it's, it's already been budgeted, it's already, it's, it's in, it's encumbered, yeah, it's encumbered.
Out of GeoBond funds or out of city?
GeoBond, again, Terry could tell you what penny is what.
Could we walk back in time just a little bit, Ms. Eads? I'd like to remind, especially new council members, when this master plan was created in approximately 2016, two thousand and sixteen dollars, this was a over five million dollar park. There was less than three million put in GeoBond. So, we have been struggling since 2017.
And if the whole GeoBond is underfunded, is what we're.
To get, yes, ma'am, thank you, you answered.
Where, I mean, we've got this on our side.
This, our staff has been through, you know what, and back, trying to figure out, and Mr. Ryan has been incredibly generous and supportive to help our staff re-engineer and redesign and value engineer and redesign to try to get at least the base park started.
And, and here's my perspective on it, again, okay, W.P. Atkinson Park was a GeoBond park, okay? We went through all kinds of bells and whistles for W.P. Atkinson Park that are not in that park because of that exact problem. The GeoBond was underfunded when it was set up, and so we didn't have the money for it, but we built, just like the rest of my day that you wanted to put in a Phase Two, built a restroom under the hangar that nobody can access, and we still don't have video cameras in our parks to monitor for graffiti and so forth, which is the reason I've been told we can't get the gates fixed, et cetera. So, it bothers me that we wanna throw money of what we do have left. I understand present day dollars compared to what we proposed to, compared to all of the things, and we want to throw money at this now to try to get half of what we had envisioned was gonna happen, and not the key element that you put in, in, Mr. Bundy, of the frisbee disc golf course that was supposed to draw all the people we want to come to this park. That's what I'm bothered by, like, again, I don't want us to get another thing in hold, and that's where I feel like we're going. And, and I'm tired of having the proposals come later that say, okay, well, now, we're already one point six in, well, actually, it took more than one point six, it ended up being one point eight seven five, so we're already that far in, so now here we come with Phase Two, and now here's how much more we need, and we don't have enough federal funding now, cheap or grants, or et cetera, so we're gonna have to take it out of city budget dollars. When we've got city budget dollars that we need to use for all of these things that keep showing up, and.
So, Susan, what?
Let me, let me add my two cents. If we don't approve this, we're gonna get two-thirds less by the time we contract it out, get bids, and get going. Uh, yeah, the GeoBond projects, most of them, were underfunded. We went with the figures that we were given, and we went forward. Largest GeoBond ever in Midwest City, fifty-three million dollars. Unfortunately, this one has been kicked down the curb, or kicked to the curb several times by this council, and the prices keep going up, and if we kick it to the curb again, we're gonna get less. We still don't know how much money, Ms. Kraft, is going to be able to get in grants and other funding. It behooves us to approve this, see what we get, and it will be up to this council whether we fund another phase or not.
Are we really obligated to go forward with this park because of the setup, because of the GeoBond project?
If you don't go forward with it, then, uh, the money has to, and we would have to have bond council here to exactly explain this, but the money then has to go back into the Geo, GeoBond account. From there, then it has to be, it can't be spent on, the, I guess the words I'm trying to say is, it can't be spent on anything else. It would end up having to somehow be reincorporated back to the citizens in some form or fashion because we're not complying with the, the vote of the people when they approve the GeoBond. So, we would, and there's a process for doing that, I'm just not real familiar with it, but I do know enough to be able to say, we can't spend this money on anything else but this, or we have to go back through the process.
And we're obligated to the citizens, Susan, as you well know, they voted for this project, and they voted for us to go forward with it. Now, it's not our problem, or not our fault, that prices, there's thirty percent increase in prices over the last several years, but we do have an obligation to go forward with what we got. Is it gonna be a scaled-down park? Obviously, it's going to. Disc golf, I don't know if it'll ever come to fruition, but we do have an obligation to our constituents, and also the constituents of that ward, to go forward with this project, because absolutely there is no facilities in that, in that ward for folks to, uh.
But is my understanding right that Councilman Dana is in her ward, does she want to go forward with this park? Because that's what I.
And, and that's, that's her opinion. Uh, once again, uh, she wasn't on council when we passed the GeoBond, uh, and she's entitled to her opinion. But once again, as a body, we have an obligation to follow through with the citizens told us to do. And, and the Parks Project was, was a part of that, uh, of the four proposals, and we need to go forward.
Mayor, I. Mayor, I think we've waited long enough, and we need to spend these dollars. They, the longer we wait, the less money we're gonna have to spend. I make a motion to approve.
I have a properly mo- uh, made, uh, motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Eads?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes, and by my math, measure passes. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, approving a professional services agreement with Freezin Nichols, Inc., and the amount of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars to develop a citywide stormwater master plan. Mr. Streets?
Hello again, City Manager, Honorable Mayor and Council. What you have before you is the aforementioned master plan for stormwater and drainage. I want to point out that one of the things we've discussed ad nauseam in, in previous meetings and from previous years, and obviously Councilman Burns is well aware, we've had drainage issues all over town for a number of years, that we could do nothing except put on a list and hope to get funded sometime in the future. What we are proposing here is to be able to do a study citywide to determine exactly what we need to do to help prioritize those projects and work to make sure that we get them funded, executed, built, and constructed in a timely manner to help address those issues which have plagued us for years. Again, you saw Freezin Nichols is in the audience tonight. They're the, they're the folks that we have selected to do this master plan, and Carrie, once again, has a number of details that she can offer and to answer any questions that you all might have about this item.
You might go through the RFP process. This wasn't just a hand selection.
Yes, that's correct. So, we knew this was going to be a project that was fairly expensive, given where we were at with the other master plans, and we probably know less, I think that's fair to say, about our stormwater system and it's the condition it's in than we do those other systems, because stormwater is often out of sight, out of mind, till it floods. It's not a concern. So, with that, um, we, uh, issued a request for proposals, and then it's advertised and open for a specific period of time. With that, we received four proposals from various qualified firms across the city, or I'm sorry, across the state and nation. And with that, then, we had a selection committee of city staff, uh, that interviewed all four of those teams, and based on their interviews and their approach to the project, Freezin Nichols was selected. So, they do have a little bit of a leg up because with the wastewater master plan, they already have access to our G I S data, um, they have a pretty good idea of what we're after for our stormwater system, and so, there were a lot of factors that, um, played into this, uh, in their selection. I would also point out that we have ARPA funds that are dedicated for the stormwater master plan. Uh, we received two million dollars in ARPA funds. A portion of that went to the wastewater master plan, a portion went to the water master plan, then we have another portion that's going to the stormwater master plan, and the item that's coming up after this is gonna be another portion of those ARPA dollars. And so, with that, uh, Freezin Nichols will need to have this project done in a timely manner in order to meet the ARPA requirements. Um, and I'll also point out, because there are ARPA funds, this is the first of two items for this contract. City of Midwest City, the council has to approve, and the municipal authority has to approve that contract because of where the funds are coming from. And the additional dollars that were needed are coming from the Stormwater Quality Fund, which is oh-six-one.
I appreciate the fact that you guys moved for- forward with this, uh, since Paul already mentioned that this has been a huge, huge, huge issue for all of us the last several years. Uh, downstream water is probably, was, unfortunately, it was ignored for years, and there's a lot of homeowners that suffer from it. And, uh, this is another deal where we're being proactive to try, we're not, we'll probably never get ahead of the curve, but we're at least getting on the right track to protect the residents that are already here from their homes flooding, the streets flooding, and our infrastructure from being damaged. So, uh, I appreciate you guys doing this because, uh, as you well know, uh, we've been beating you guys up about downstream water runoff for a long time. I know more about sheet runoff than, than I care to know.
We've talked to most people on this council with issues in their wards within the last thirty days. Almost every one of you have been in contact with staff with issues, so.
And it'd be a true statement, if we switch doors midstream, we're gonna put ourselves further behind on this, correct?
Well, we've got the ARPA money, we, we need to move forward, and thanks to Carrie, we got the ARPA money.
Okay, never mind. Chair, entertain a motion. I have a properly formed motion, and I have a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries.
I abstain.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote.
Sorry.
It's okay. Eads?
I abstain.
Burns?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Absolutely. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, mos- or, uh, item number eight, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, awarding the bid to and entering into a contract with H and H Plumbing and Utilities, Inc., for two million, two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to construct the Northside Utilities Water Project. City Council delegates the Merit Asylum and execute the contract. Mr. Bundy?
This project is to bring a twelve-inch water line to the Wharf and Centrillium. Currently, the Wharf is using a, a neighboring city's water, which we are paying for, um, and then Centrillium is also looking at the neighboring city. So, taking this water is, is pretty important to Centrillium's operations. And Wharf's, by the way. And ARPA funds are being used for this. Thank you, Don.
Motion to approve.
And did this come in under budget, Brandon?
Yes, yes, sir, it did.
We found one that came under budget.
Yes, uh, I'm sorry. I, I need to celebrate this.
How much?
The, the engineer's estimate is three point three million.
No.
So, this is almost a million under the estimate.
Excellent.
I do have a properly formed motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move to new business public discussion. We have several of you signed up. I want to remind you that since it's not an agenda item, we cannot engage in a back-and-forth conversation with you, but if we feel like the item merits further discussion, we will bring it back to the, uh, next council meeting for, uh, consideration. So, with that being said, uh.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to remind everybody they have four minutes.
Thank you so much. That was a joke, you guys, lighting up. You do have four minutes to make your point. Ms. O'Neill, are you still here? I don't blame you, I wouldn't be either. Ms. Sharp?
Sharp, Margarita?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for sticking this out.
I usually have more energy, so I want to apologize. Mr. Thompson knows I usually have energy, but my name is Margarita Shaw. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I work for Community Health Centers of Oklahoma. We are federally qualified health center, and most individuals know us by Mayor Mahoney, Health Center in Spencer, Perry, Clausen, Oklahoma City, we're in Pot County, Shawnee, uh, Logan County, Lincoln County. But I am here to announce, and Dr. Cobb was involved in this, we bought the old Highland Park Elementary School, fifty-three oh-one South Dimple, and we are providing, as of May sixth, medical services, behavioral health counseling, lab services, case management. But we will bring dental and pharmacy to the community as well by the end of the year, so we will be a one-stop medical home. We are providing services to folk, of course, if you're insured, but my passion, if you're uninsured or underinsured, it's just a thirty-dollar copay, you get five labs. Now, you know how much laboratory work costs, so we are just so excited to be in the community. But another reason why I'm here, and I saw those babies, we're providing a Friday, August the second, back-to-school event, free backpacks, school supplies, and as you guys know, sixth to twelfth graders in Middale have to have a clear backpacks. We're providing those. And then I'm gonna have a lot of community-based organizations, so I'm just so excited. And I've also partnered with Goodwill, they have a free employment unit, so they will be there August second, helping with resumes, online applications, employment partners. So, if anybody doesn't have children, they need employment, come see us at Highland Park, fifty-three oh-one South Dimple Drive.
Thank you for being here, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. We, we've already agreed to do that. Josh is already working on it.
He hid.
He's back there in the corner in the shadow.
He's hiding from you.
He has already put it up. It's already up.
We've already started.
Okay, okay, okay. Mr. Hanks? Thanks for sticking it out and. The floor is yours, sir. Please state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ricky Lee Hanks, twenty-two oh-three South Avery Avenue, and, uh, I may be in the master plan tonight.
I know you are.
I have some pictures, if I may, um, of my property that is like, and causing so much grief for me, and has been for, uh, some time. I don't have copies for everyone to feature in the studio record. I'm, uh. I've lost so much. Twenty-two of hers, South Avery. So, uh, this, I've owned this property for twenty-five years.
I've owned this property for twenty-five years, and, uh, about ten years ago, as they built east of my property, the water just kept flooding worse and worse. And I've talked to the city, uh, and I get promises, nobody comes out, nobody returns my phone calls. That first picture, or there's one of the pictures in there that just, just a few weeks ago, my entire garage, foot of water in it, yes, ma'am, and I've lost not just personal property, but memorabilia, you know, children, my grandchildren's. So, at any rate, um, what I, what I'm proposing is, I mean, actually, the city came out and put a, I gave them nine feet of my easement, and they put a storm drain down the south side of my property, and the contractor left all the dirt, just, he didn't pull it away, just piled it up, and so, now, the problem has magnified five times. There's, there, the storm drains that come in, there, there's one street view right there, and there's, there's two other neighbors that are flooded also, um, not, not nearly as bad as I am. And so, uh, what my proposal is, I've marked on that Google, uh, map sheet that shows my property, and I've drawn a black outline where that area fled so badly, I think this can be part of the stormwater drainage solution. And so, it's a low area, it, it connects to a creek, there's a creek that runs to the very back of that, and almost to the, now, my, my bridge is actually, there's a, there's a bridge there.
Just right there? Yeah, there was a bridge, there was a bridge right there, and that bridge is swept away. And so, um, what I'm thinking is if, um, I've actually got a pre-application meeting
with the, with the community service because I can divide that lot. I'm one point six-six, one point six-seven acres. And if I could get, um, paid for my, my detached garage, my property, and I could move the garage to my house, and then the city could use that as a, as a, as a flow to go into that creek, and the creek is, um, I think it got dammed up, um, a number of years ago. One of the people to the north of me had a dispute with another neighbor over, and they, so he, he's gone now, but he closed up the creek. So, the, the, the storm drains that they put on the curb is not enough intake for the flow, so it just goes around, goes into my garage, and, uh, so, I'm hoping to get some remedy because it's the creek.
Sir, we've got your contact information. I can't engage with you.
Understand.
But I can promise you, somebody's gonna be in contact with you.
I, I.
I'm sorry.
I believe you, I believe you. I believe you.
I'll personally make sure of that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Does anyone else have anything to bring before the council? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned, and I'm passing the gavel to my Vice Mayor, Mr. Burns, and I will be departing. Y'all have a good night. You bet.